Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the nice meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order with roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
Mr. Gorman.
Here.
Five present, we have a quorum.
Great. First item for this evening is our approval of our agenda. There is one addition, which is the supplemental item, which has the numbers on it, which I believe is available here in the room, but it was included in the agenda. Is there any other changes to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion and second.
Please vote. We're doing the fancy stuff tonight. Five eyes, motion carries.
Okay, next item is public comment on closed session. We have two closed session items this evening. The first is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9 for Finley versus Ridgecrest. And then we have conference with real property negotiators, Government Code 54956.8 for under negotiation counsel's direction regarding properties within the city limits. Is there any public comment on the closed session items? Hearing none, I'll close session comments, and we will adjourn into our closed session and return at 6:00 PM. Gentlemen, our apologies for being a few minutes late, we had two issues to go over. We'll go ahead and call our meeting back to order at 6:05 PM. And if I can ask everyone to go ahead and please stand and join me for the Pledge of Captain?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Rajaratnam.
Please join me in prayer, if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for Ridgecrest, the place we cherish and the place where we live. Lord, I pray for our country. Lord, give your wisdom to the leaders of our country so that they take this country in the right direction. Lord, I pray for the upcoming elections. Be with the presidential candidates, protect them, and give them good health. Lord, thank you for saving the life of former President Trump. Lord, I also pray for the local elections. Let there be unity, let there be civility, let there be decency in all the election matters, Lord. Lord, I remember the conflict in Middle East. Lord, let there be stability and peace in that area as soon as possible. Lord, I pray for our troops who are in harm's way, protect them from all evil. Lord, I pray for the city staff who work hard to make this place a better community to live, especially those who have completed five years, 10 years, and 25 years. Lord, thank you for their commitment to this community and for the city. Lord, I also thank you very much for people like Mr. Michael Cash, who served this community sacrificially and without expecting anything in return. Lord, we are blessed to have such people in this community. Lord, be with the city council. Lord, give us your wisdom as we deal with many issues which are important to this community. Lord, let our decisions be beneficial to this community. Bless each one of us here today. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Next is our attorney report out of closed session. Martin?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Council members, two items were taken up by the council in closed session. One was existing litigation, the other one was conference with real property negotiators. No reportable actions were taken by the council during the closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If I can ask my fellow council members now to join me at the podium, we have a few recognition Well, good evening. One of the special joys that we have is we get to recognize our city staff when they reach special service levels of years of service to our community. We have three employees who've reached those important plateaus. Only one of them is here, but we'd like to recognize them all. The first is Jennifer Ledbetter, who has completed five years of service to the city of Ridgecrest, and we thank her for her years of service. And then Justin Dampier, who has, I should say Captain Dampier, who's been with our department now for 25 years of service. We thank him for his years of service. And then our one guest attendee is Ms. Patricia Rockwell, who has now completed her 10th year of service with the city of Ridgecrest. And if I could ask her to come up so I could recognize her.
Yay! Thanks.
Thank you, Trace. You guys don't know, Trace runs our HR and many of the things that keeps our staff running on the day-to-day, also all of the events for the community, with her committee, of course, I'm not putting them all in the bucket, as well as safety, supplies, many, many other things that she does for the community, and we thank her for her years of service. Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you, and I enjoy working here and enjoy being part of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to all of our city staff and all their incredible commitment to the citizens of Ridgecrest. With that, I'll pass it over to Councilman Rajaratnam.
I'm here to present Key to the City Award to Mr. Michael Cash. It's my honor and privilege to present Key to the City to Mr. Michael Cash. I have chosen to bestow this honor on him for his service to our community, especially your involvement with various veteran organizations through which you show your love, you show your care for the veterans who served this community, who served this country, who fought wars for us, and who fought wars for various countries in the nation for their freedom. Mr. Michael Cash is a man of strong desire to help others. He's a man of faith, depending on God, to do his best for this community. He has a list of notable achievements. The most important for me, I thought, was establishing Operation Family, which helps families of the veterans, the military families, through resources during their tough times which they endure when they have tragedies in the war. Another important achievement was his involvement in bringing 9/11 Tunnel to Towers to Ridgecrest, which is a great thing for our little town. So I now request Mr. Michael Cash to come to the podium. Before I hand over the mic to you, I want to read your bio.
Oh, my, this could take a while.
Michael Cash came to Ridgecrest in June of 1957 from Marion Cops Base Camp Pendleton 67 years ago. He was eight years old at that time. He attended the elementary, middle schools. James Monroe, Marvay, and graduated from Barrows High School, class of 67. His first memory of serving our community and helping others was as a den chief in Boy Scouts, Troop Three, helping a Cub Scout troop with activities and meetings. That activity fostered his passion to help others. In his junior, senior years at high school, summer program, the Navy asked him to help in writing technical manuals for air-delivered weapons system. It was during this time he gained a passion for our military and their service to our country. Mr. Cash studied biochemistry, electronics, and aviation in college. He joined Department of Defense in 1980, and by way of quick promotions, ended up at the Pentagon several times with overseas detachments, dealing with air-delivered weapons, and training of 14 NATO countries on how to use these weapons. How great this is! I mean, even while reading, I get goosebumps. He attended junior college in the Camp Pendleton area, where he volunteered to assist with a program to help children with Down Syndrome. That fostered his passion to help others with the challenges of dealing with life outside of their control. After returning from college to Ridgecrest, he attended a local church and developed his faith in God and spiritual growth. There were many opportunities to help and assist with the young youth programs and watch them develop their spiritual life. It was during this time that he met his future wife, Caroline. Caroline and Mike have four children that were born and raised in Ridgecrest. All four have served our country and are serving our country. Mike says that they were blessed to have children that have a passion to help others. They have lived all over the world, and one has remained in Ridgecrest and is working for the Navy. Unfortunately, Mike's wife passed away suddenly in 2011, which led to Mike's retirement. During the 9/11 attack on our country, Caroline and Mike established Operation Family, a 501(c)(3) foundation that is founded to help military families and their care providers with resources to help them during times of tragedies from war-related events. To date, they have provided over $5 million to help. Mike's efforts and organizations he is involved with are California Office of Emergency Services, Ridgecrest Emergency Services Committee, City of Ridgecrest, Desert Memorial Park, Reach Across America, Ridgecrest Memorial Day, American Legion, Tunnel to Towers, Parade of Thousand Flags, Banner Program, Respect for Law Dinner and Award, Ridgecrest Police Explorer, China Lake Sidewinder, Sea Carried, Ridgecrest Remember Our Fallen California, China Lake Navy Ball, Desert Christian Center, Ridgecrest Calvary Chapel, Biker Blessing, Patriot Guard Riders, Thor, which is Therapeutic, Horse Riding, Matarango Museum, China Lake Museum. Mike, he truly lived up, this is, you didn't write this, I'm saying this. Mike truly lived up to his last name, Cash, because I have observed him at Respect for Law Dinner, where he has awarded cash for all the recipients of the awards. So that's, you're really a true sacrificial person in this community. Mike says, quote unquote, "It has been and is an honor to continue my support with these organizations who are committed to honor, serve, and a passion to help others." And this is my favorite part. Again, he further says, quote unquote, "For me, this would not be possible without the strength of my God, who cares for me even in my greatest of tragedies? It is God's love that helps me to continue the efforts to serve Him, and my hope that God would be glorified in all that I do to serve Him and His people." What an honor for me to present the Key to the City Award to you, Mr. Michael Cash.
Thank you.
Why don't you go and say something for some of the people?
Not nearly as long as his.
I'll let you say a few words first, then we'll do photos.
Thank you, Solomon. Wow. Okay, he said pretty much everything I was going to say. But if I had to title my few words, the title would be, "This is not about me." And a few of you, I know that doesn't surprise you. At first, when Solomon approached me and asked me if I'd consider it, my first thought was, you know what, I'm a behind-the-scenes guy, no thank you. But that wasn't the last word, because what I heard was, "This is not about you." So I got to tell you, it's a great honor. You guys, some of you were at the change of command and the retirement of one of my heroes, Captain Jeremy Vaughn, where the Keys of the City was presented there. There's one of my heroes, and if anybody deserves the Keys of the City, it would be him. Just an amazing man, father, loves God, loves his country, and I have tremendous respect for him. So I'm following incredible footsteps to receive this. And there's so many others that deserve this award. A lot of them are right here, in this room. And you're behind the scenes, you're volunteers, and one of them, I have to brag, is my son right here, who's very active in so many community events, and on the Navy and with the Sheriff's Department. I hope, he's going to follow me. He's going to replace me, I hope sooner than later. But why me? Again, I say, this word is not about me, because I come to you, you know, broken. I have disabilities, obviously. I'm not perfect, I fail and I fall. And how is it that someone like me would be considered for such an award? Where do I get the passion to serve others and put them first? And you're right, my passion could be considered extreme. When I'm feeling down and out, when I'm tired, I'm hurting, when I think there are just too many tragedies and failures in life, how do I keep going? So where does the passion to help and serve others come from? It comes from God. My hope is that God would be glorified by showing Himself through me and us, that even when you're broken, that when we fail, that when we fall, God can still work through us. When your faith is small, your trust is little, your courage is fear, your obedience is disobedience, God can still use me and us. So God, my prayer is that you give strength and wisdom to our leaders, all of our leaders here, and that you bless our country and you heal our country. It's true, in God we trust, and may God bless America. Thank you.
Can we take some photos?
Okay. Just give me the command, I will bow.
You stand in the center. First step, you stand in the center.
Yes, sir. Like this? Just do what she says.
It should look good. I try hard.
Let's get it, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you to our police department. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
That was swell.
You had a lot to do with my career and my life.
A million years ago, while I was working in the same branch as Mike, he was fooling around with a little DARPA software throwaway. He was toying with it. It was called Milnet. He was the first human being in the known universe to be surfing the net. He was, he's right here.
What? There you are. Thank you so much. Another one of my heroes.
It is always our honor to represent, to recognize our incredible community, and once again, a great honor to Mr. Cash, and we look forward to his continued help and support for this community for many years to come. He's been an incredible leader for us. You want a picture with, we'll pause, we'll pause for Mr. Cash to have a photo.
You guys want to?
Do you want to come back, please, please, recognize Mr. Cash.
I have a lot of heroes here.
Here, we'll move out of the way.
Right here.
This is for you guys.
We'll just get out of the background.
You gotta go too.
No, no, we're moving out of the background. We're just staying out of the background, Skip.
Okay, now the picture looks better.
Gina, Chris, you should be in here. No? Pastor Bob, Lenny, it's your key. There are a lot of heroes here, a lot of people in here that deserve this as well. So I'm sharing it with you all. In fact, a lot of them are right here, beside me and behind me. If you're talking to me, I can't hear you. Too many fighter aircraft, that's why I'm down.
That key works in my office at the line.
Oh, does it? I'll have to get with Captain Vaughn and find out what horse he can have on. I guess get all comfortable and sit in there.
I enjoy these things.
You must just have a bag of them, you just carry around, because I leave them here, and then they slowly, like, whittle over time.
Eric, can I get one of those?
Absolutely, my friend. Skip's handling them out. Okay, we will go ahead and get back with our regularly scheduled program, and our next item on our agenda this evening is public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments, but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may now act on any item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name, and will begin public comment from the floor. Is there any public comment from the floor? And you are?
I'm Vicky Cash. I was here for my brother-in-law. But I have been wanting to, I'm a volunteer at the Lighthouse for doing events, and I've noticed with all the vendors coming on the streets here, one of the things, I was wondering is if there's any city regulation that they have a trash can. What I've noticed is the snow cone place on the corner of Ridgecrest Boulevard does not have a trash can, and so people walk on Balsam Street and fill them up, and they're overflowing, and we empty them regularly. I did it without a key. I dug my hand in there. It was very gross. So I've been wanting to ask you this, but I just happened to be here. So I went over and talked to him, and the young girl in the booth said, yeah, the owner said he was going to, and then he didn't. So I went back and asked again, just seeing the trash falling on the street. And I checked for this season, and he still doesn't. And I know there's a lot of pop-up taco places and stuff like this, and my concern is, from being a Girl Scout 55 years ago and picking up trash in the desert, you know, that it just freely goes, and I see seniors walking on streets, picking stuff up, and if there would be a way to head it off so it's not blowing around.
Let's see what we can do. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And then my second thing is, you don't have any names up here.
Oh, they're not turned around.
Our plates, our plates are missing?
Except for the lady on the end and the gentleman there, and it would have been fun to see who's who. So is there, is there any city regulation or anything, or?
So I think we can definitely, so as soon as we get done with the public comment section, we'll have, we'll talk to the staff and have them give you direction.
Okay, so I don't need to do anything, but you'll look into?
Right.
We will, and matter of fact, as soon as we get done with the public comment section, it'll stop, and then we will ask.
We'll give direction to our staff to speak with us.
Okay, because I'm kind of a volunteer, like it runs in the family.
Yeah.
So if I need to do anything to help, let me know.
Sure. We appreciate it, Vicky.
Just give us about five minutes, and you'll hear their responses.
Is there any other public comment from the floor?
Good evening, ladies and council, I'm Tom Wicknick, and I'm here to have a little discussion about term limits here in the city of Ridgecrest. I bring this up because we're in a situation now where it appears that our term limits initiative is going to be challenged in a certain, to a certain extent. And Mr. Blades, this is not personal in any way. So this is, my comments are not directed at you in any personal matter.
Yeah, I don't take it personal, Tom.
Okay, good. Because if it was Solomon, or Scott, or anybody else, I'd still be here asking these questions. Okay. So in 2012, I orchestrated an initiative to have term limits on the city council and mayor. And the term limits really simply says you can't serve more than eight years, eight consecutive years in any office or combination of offices, whether it be mayor, or city council, or both. Well, it appears that maybe through the city attorney, there's a loophole being found in that initiative. And I'm still not convinced that it is a loophole that isn't okay, because I'm still working on doing my research. But when we challenged the idea of Mr. Blades running, pulling papers to run for city council, he's already served five years, approximately, I'm going to use round numbers. And so that means eight years, he's got three years left, that he could serve the city. But he's filed papers for a seat that requires four years. And when we were doing the initiative process in the beginning, back in 2012, I know there was something in the code that required that anybody that pulled papers for an office would have to be able to fulfill the terms of the office, not part of the term, but the term. So now we're in the situation where we have somebody that is going to attempt to run for office and only run three years, and then he's going to have to step down. And according to the city attorney said, Mr. Blade, if elected, can serve the remainder of his eight-year term. If at that time, term limits in the municipal code remain unchanged by the voters, which is, remember, that was true, it was approved by the voters, he can step down. Well, if there's any idea about changing the law by putting it to the voters, I will just give one reminder. When the initiative was passed, 74% of the people voted for term limits here. And in recent polling this morning on the news, that generally speaking, across the country, 82% of the people agree on term limits for elected officials. So I don't think there's any chance of it ever getting voted down, if you chose to put it on the ballot. Of course, that would be an expense the city would have to incur to do that for the voters. But really, what it comes down to is this, and let me frame it like this. With three years left to go, you're in a position where you'd be actually smarter if you didn't run this time and ran in two years, because the initiative only says, take a break for two years. If you stop now, instead of going three years, you'd have to wait another five years to run again after that term. But if you stop now, you only need to take a break for two years, and you could come back for eight. So you'd have a lot of opportunity to come back and do a lot more for the city if you just waited the two-year break that normally the initiative would ask for or require. So because of that, I'm asking you to make sure that you really give it some serious thought. Make sure that the people understand that if you continue to try and run, that they're elected, if they choose you, they're electing somebody that will only serve for three years, and that you would step down, and then the council would probably appoint somebody, probably somebody they know and like, to fill your seat for a year, for the remainder of your term. If that's what you want, then you continue the path you're going. If it's not what you want, if you want to be able to serve again, and I don't have any problem with you serving again at all, then take a break now, take a break for two years, and then come back and run again, and then you can run another eight years. So I'm just asking that I am going to continue to try and research this more to find background to the theory about if you can't run for an office unless you can fulfill the full term, which the initiative says, for a full four-year term, the vacancy is for. Not three years, not two years, but four years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor? Is there any public comment on the phones? See none, I'll bring it back to council. And council direction to staff, I believe Ms. Cash's issue would be Public Works?
No, it would probably be Code Enforcement. I'll take care of it.
Okay, and then also just, I don't know what our regularity is of emptying the trashcans on Balsam, whether that's something that we need to, you know, increase during the summer season, or something to that effect. We can certainly take a look at that. We also know where you've got a lot more traffic going on down there more often that might be generating some of that, that we may need to revisit. Cans that weren't being used as aggressively, hopefully, we have a lot more people visiting Balsam now, so. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there any other council direction?
Is this comments and direction?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, I don't know what section we're on.
You're on, we're on council comments and direction.
Okay, yeah, okay, so Tommy, I wanted to actually address, it isn't like I didn't expect for there to be some comments about this particular situation. And when I was first appointed in December of 2019, it was heavy on my mind. Heavy on my mind, because even after the appointment, stuff starting, started getting really heavy, I started getting pulled into everything, as you can imagine. And so I started asking my own questions and doing my own research into where I thought we would end up. Now, the ordinance says two terms, eight years, unequivocally, it's very clear about that. So I went out and I did, I noticed that almost every single other community, every town, every city that you can find, they at least go back in to redefine if, you know, what a term limit is. So if you are appointed, then you're filling somebody else's term. Right now, it doesn't say that in our ordinance, and I fully recognize that. I'm not trying to break a law, and I'm certainly not trying to disillusion anybody. Matter of fact, I have done the opposite of that. I have tried to be very diligent about asking as many questions as I can about anybody who will answer them. And so I would, I will absolutely, as soon as possible, trying, I will try, I will ask, and they can tell me not to, or tell me, or agree, ask the city council if they will put on the ballot, not to get rid of term limits, but to simply clarify the language. Because I cannot see, I don't think this community would ever want to be in a situation where they're appointing somebody who's deeply invested in the job. We ask them to step up, to be up here on this dais, and then they know they don't ever get to serve two full terms, simply because the code was never defined. And so I think a definition of the code is just what makes logical sense to me. So I absolutely intend to ask the council to put it to the vote, and I can't imagine. And we'll see how it goes, and voters will choose or not to choose, and that's okay. We are all, we're all up here at the will of the voter, and I think that's a good thing. So that, and I wanted you to know, that's where my mind is, because I was taking, I understand what you were saying. I have a lot of other comments, but I'll save them for now. I'm not trying to make any political gestures, or certainly, I don't want to talk about my campaign. I just wanted to address your, your questions, so you didn't think that there was anything, anything crazy going on.
And Mayor, if I may add?
Yes.
Thank you. Generally speaking, the term limits, ordinances, and regulations that are adopted by municipalities provide for an appointment situation. So, for example, in some jurisdictions, if you're appointed within the first two years of the term, of a four-year term, then you're serving a full term. If you're appointed within the last two years of the term, it doesn't count. And there are various ways of approaching that, and if this subject matter comes up in the future for council's consideration for the '26 election, for example, we can get into greater depth about what the options are, if the council desires to deal with those. So thank you for the time.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that you, the council, since you, you know, if, however this goes, right? I wanted you to understand my intentions as well. So nothing is, I want, I want everything to be as transparent as possible. I don't want anybody to think that I'm doing anything I shouldn't be doing.
Thank you for that, sir. Okay, with that, we will go forward with any other council announcements or direction. I'll start with Mr. Gorman. Any council announcements?
I do. I'm now involved with the East Kern Air Pollution Control District. And they have their meetings in Tehachapi. I'll be going soon, but they just issued an advisory with regard to the quality of the air from all the smoke, specifically in this valley, from the trout fire. They did recommendations like, that are hard to follow, like if your home is cooled exclusively with evaporative coolers, you might consider turning that off, and you can't. Other than that, what I do, I carry a pocketful of Ricola cough drops, because the smoke makes me cough, and eye drops, because the smoke hurts my eyes, and I don't practice for any of those marathons outside like I normally don't anyway, ever. So I thought I'd share that with you. It is official. We do have a health alert. And do what you can while still staying comfortable to avoid getting out of breath. Another thing, since people are filling out papers and turning them into RICA with 25 bucks to run for office, I have learned that one of the perks of being on city council, at least during this time when the base is being rebuilt, that I get to go to ribbon cuttings. I just went to my third today, and oh my gosh, I got to visit the brand-new machine shop. You could put this whole city hall in that machine shop. It's so big. And wonderful machines. And I was going around dribbling from the mouth like a Pavlovian dog, enjoying these big machines. My little machine shop would fit 20 of them into that place, and the ribbon cuttings are a joy. Also, if you're on the city council, you get to shake hands with policemen who've just saved lives. You get to give, help give the keys to the city, to remarkable people like Michael Cash, and you get to work shoulder to shoulder with wonderful people. So there, that's all I had to say. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Doc?
None.
None. Thelman?
Yeah. I do have a couple of comments. I mean, there were some comments and complaints about traffic lights, so I had a meeting with the Public Works Director, Mr. Reed. And he said they're, they've been fine-tuned, and he asked me to go and check them when there is not that much of traffic. So I did that several times after I talked to you. I went early during the night, late during the night, middle of the night, and early morning, and during daytime traffic. So the traffic flow is smooth during night times, and it all synchronized. There is no reason for people to complain about that. The only time I had to stop was when there is cross-traffic. So obviously, we have to do that. You cannot rush into the cross-traffic. So I want to appreciate your hard work in this. And I have one suggestion. I know you have some kind of software where you monitor that. So if you can, if you can make a presentation to the city council, how you are going to, how you are monitoring the traffic, that would be useful. Is that something I can ask for? Okay, thank you very much. And the second comment is, China Lake Boulevard, the road looks nice after the sewer work is done with all the traffic signs and all that stuff. And again, there is some digging going on, so I was wondering what is happening again.
So the only digging that's currently ongoing, all the major work has been completed. It's like the manholes had to be raised, so we were digging those up, so the framing covers could be brought to grade. And then today, I'm sure you guys noticed there were people out saw cutting. That's how Caltrans detects traffic. They use what's called a loop, essentially detects weight, right, and different frequency, and that's how it tells the signals, hey, there's a car here. So that we were installing the loops that we had to cut through when we did the trench line.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Again, I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, sir. Blades, anything else?
I don't have anything else, other than, I said it feels like a little odd. It's been about six weeks since we've been up here with a meeting, so a lot has continued to happen, and I just want to thank the community. I want to thank everyone who came out to the Richcrest fireworks. I want to thank everyone who came out to all of the different community events that we have that are going on through the summer. We have our hot August nights coming up on August 4th, I believe. Is that correct? Do I have the date right? August 4th? August 10th, sorry. Thank you. And we've got some more events coming up. Just want to thank the rest of the community for all their times coming out. It's been a lot of fun this summer. And then finally, I know that there's been concerns with the splash pad. That's one of the things that I tend to hear. Guys, it's just like anything else, gets to 120 degrees, machinery has to shut off to cool off. We got to cool off the same way, so does parts. We're doing our very best to manage it, and we appreciate the feedback that we've gotten, and we're continuing to make sure those are taken care of. Our cooling center is open. We're doing everything possible to support all those that may need those resources during this time, and thanks for anybody coming out. We're always trying to do our best to protect the citizens. We appreciate the feedback and information that we get from the community.
Okay, with that, I will move on to our consent calendar. All items listed on consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item or removed from the consent calendar will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. I'll now read the three items on the calendar for tonight. First is a proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Richcrest City Council's regular meeting dated June 19, 2024. Number four is consideration of resolutions relating to the calling of Richcrest's general municipal election to be held on November 5, 2024. And number five is a resolution of the city council of the city of Richcrest to levy and collect sewer fees on the general tax rolls for fiscal year 2024/25. Is there any member of the council that wishes to have an item pulled? Hearing none, is there a member of the public which wishes to have an item pulled? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented?
So am I.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and second.
Please vote. We have five ayes, motions, carries.
Fantastic. Next is our discussion and action items. Item number six is our first one. This is adoption of a resolution and introduction and first reading in accordance of the city council of the city of Richcrest amending the Richcrest Municipal Code by establishing a transactions and use of sales tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization and placing the no-tax increase reauthorization measure on the election ballot for November 5, 2024. City Attorney?
I have this one.
Oh, okay.
Great. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what I'm here tonight to do is to ask the council to consider approving a resolution and a first reading of the ordinance to reauthorize Measure V and place it on the November 5 ballot. Little bit of history about Measure V, Measure L. As you know, in 2012, the Richcrest City Council declared a fiscal emergency because it did not have the adequate revenue to fund critical services, specifically public safety and road repair. Some of the main reasons for this was the state cubbed in, and for the dissolution of the RDA, additional money grabs from our property tax in the way of the reimbursement augmentation fund and ERAF, as well as booking fees, the old triple flip for the vehicle license fees, and ultimately, just the city really not having a sufficient tax base due to our main employers not paying taxes. So from 2009 to 2012, the city was forced to reduce the number of police officers from 38 to 30 due to the revenue shortfall, with an overall staff, city staff reduction of approximately 38%. In 2012, there was insufficient funding for road repair, and there was an estimated $6 million in deferred road maintenance cost. And at that time, the amount of road repair we were doing was very little. In 2012, after council approved placing a tax initiative to the voters for approval, it was a three-quarter cent sales tax was passed by the community with the priorities of protecting public safety and addressing road repair. Measure L at the time included a five-year sunset clause, which was scheduled to end in 2017. In 2016, the council recognizing that without the reauthorization of Measure L, there would have to be significant cuts in the police department as well as road repair. This time, they placed it on the ballot for the voters to decide, with it being a one-cent sales tax with a sunset clause of eight years. Without the reauthorization of the sales tax in 2016, there would have had to have been major cuts in the PD and road maintenance. The voters approved the initiative and passed Measure V with a scheduled ending of 2024. And that's what brings me to you tonight. Who currently pays into the Measure V funds? Currently, the sales tax is paid about 56% or 53% by residents, and then 47% by non-residents, those who live in the county, and those who are coming through the community, traveling through. So how have Measure V funds been used currently? Measure V funds pay for about 90% of the city's road repair and pothole repair. It also funds about 50% of the police department, which includes 14 officer and 16 professional staff positions. And if you look here on the road repair, I know this is, we keep putting this up, and it's really hard to see. But really, the illustration here is that, you know, we've just now completed our next five-year road plan. And currently, if things are status quo, we're looking at touching all, 90% of our roads by the end of 2030, which is fairly significant. And you can see there, and you have to have really good glasses, you can see all the lines in red are all the roads that we've touched from 2012 to 2023, which are a significant number of roads. Remember, we've had about 50 years of deferred maintenance that we were trying to catch up on. So as, as we are fixing the roads, the roads are actually going into disrepair. So there's this struggle between fixing more, or fixing them quicker, maintaining them quicker than what they're degrading.
So is the, is it the blue, the completed?
Correct, yeah. The blue are the ones that we've touched, either road repair, slurry, or hot mix. And you can see in there what our proposed road repairs can be in the next five years. I know that we are going to be coming back to council and going over this in greater detail here shortly. But this is more for the illustration on the right, just to say, hey, we're gonna, by 2030, our plan is to have touched 90% of our roads since 2012, since the passage of Measure L, which is a fairly aggressive amount of road work. Ready? Okay, what services would be impacted if Measure V ends and is not reauthorized? As I stated earlier, half our police departments funded with Measure V. Without Measure V, there'd have to be significant cuts in services, which would result in a reduction in number of neighborhood patrols, slower 911 responses, and then less crime prevention investigation. It would be a significant impact to the city. As you know, for the past 12 years, we're one of the rare communities that's actually been able to maintain our crime rate and keep our community safe. And part of that's because of the dedicated officers that we have that work within our police department. And without the funding, there would be a significant reorganization of that agency. Road repair. We currently estimate we still have about $50 million in deferred road maintenance that needs to be performed. As I stated earlier, the funding we receive from As I stated earlier, the funding we receive from Measure V helps us maintain and reduce that backlog. Without that funding, majority of those road repair and maintenance would go away. Now, we recently conducted a survey and our top community priorities have remained fairly the same over the last several years. The community is still extremely interested in pothole repair, maintaining our city streets, maintaining emergency 911 medical and police response, still maintaining our parks and playgrounds, attracting local businesses and jobs, and maintaining recreational programs for all and ensuring a local control of our fire services. Now, we will be posting that survey online here, I believe, tomorrow, so the public will be able to see the results of that. So the proposed reauthorization of the local control sales tax, Measure V, it would be the reauthorization of the one-cent local control sales tax. It will not increase the current sales tax that we are paying. If reauthorized by the voters for a third time, it will continue at its current rate. As a reminder, the purchase of groceries, prescription medications are exempt from sales tax, so it's not a burden on our seniors and low-income residents. This would be a sales tax paid by the city and the county residents and visitors and not a property tax to only be paid by the citizens of Ridgecrest and businesses. So this is the fairest tax that we can have for our city, because the people who live outside the city limits also have to shop within the city. This also picks up the people who come through town to visit or to do work on base. So this actually is probably the fairest tax that we can have when it comes to the overall issue. Most importantly, local funds cannot be taken by the county or state. It includes fiscal safeguards, encouraging annual audits with an independent oversight committee. That was important for us to keep, just because, you know, we've had 12 years, 11 years of reports. They've all been positive. They've all been positive in the sense they said that the council and the city has spent Measure L and Measure V as intended by the voters. If approved, to approve this resolution, we'll place the reauthorized local control sales tax measure on the November 5th ballot. And here is the proposed ballot question.
Okay, do you have any questions at all?
May I add one more thing, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The important thing for the council here to remember, we're not approving anything today other than putting this on the ballot and allowing the residents to decide whether or not they wish to continue to have that funding source for the city.
Correct. Just let me reiterate that in non-lawyer terms, I got you. We're not approving your sales tax, you approve your sales tax at the November 5th ballot box. We are authorizing and putting it on for multiple reasons. First, well, we'll get to discussion, I'll pass and let discussion occur. So is there any council questions or comments first? Any council questions? Please, sir.
One thing I want to emphasize and clarify to the public, this is not something new. I mean, you understood probably by this time, but I just want to mention it again, this is not something new. It is what we had, we are just renewing it for the future purpose. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. And to the city staff, we are saying it is ending by December 2024, which I think is not right. It ends March 31st, 2025.
Yeah, correct. We actually quit collecting revenue April 1st of 2024. As you remember, during our budget process, we had anticipated in our budget that the measure would pass with the community. However, with the caveat that if it does not, we will be coming back to the council in January to make the necessary adjustments in the budget to accommodate the loss of Measure V if in fact that it's not approved by the voters.
So what if it passes?
If it passes, we continue with the current budget. We'd budgeted as anticipating that it would pass. It was just easier to do that with the understanding that if it does not pass, we come back for a mid-year budget adjustment for the loss of this revenue. And that was explained. It just made it easier than to try and anticipate cutting 20, you know, laying off 22 upwards to 30 people as the budget. So it was one of those ones, it was easier just to assume for budgetary purposes that it would pass. If it doesn't pass, we come back for mid-year adjustments and we make these tough decisions that would, I would anticipate would become effective April 1st.
Okay, but either way, Mr. Strand, this will end in March 2025, not in December 2024. That's my point, though.
Yeah, it would end April 1st of 2025 is when we stop collecting.
Okay, so we need to change the resolution stating that it ends in March 31st, 2025.
So you're asking for a revision of the whereas to the resolution that by its own terms at the end of March 2025?
So that should read as at the end of March 2025.
Martin, do you see where he's?
Very first whereas.
The first whereas?
Yeah.
Okay.
End of April.
End of March 2025.
That's correct.
Good catch. Any other council comments?
No, just real quick, I think we see what the impact is and we've listened, we have done our very best as a council and the city staff to listen to the people through whichever way we can. So I think it's clear that people want it on the ballot, so off we go.
Okay. I'll go ahead and ask if there's any public comment?
Just a couple of questions. When do we, when does the city pay off our RDA obligations? Do you know when that would be?
2030.
2037.
2037? That's still quite a ways. Okay. Where did the, how did you get the statistic of county residents paying 53% and the city paying, or whatever the numbers were? Where did that come from? How do we know that?
Finance director.
Okay, well, but where did that number come from?
She did the analysis and we came up with that percentage.
But how do you, when somebody comes in my store, how do you know if they're in the county or if they're in the city when the sales tax is collected? I don't see anything that identifies a county resident and a city resident when I report sales tax and all the other business people that are up there. So how would we have that information?
There's probably a statistical analysis.
There's a ton of statistical from either population basis. I mean, I do not know what statistical ratio they used, but I mean, I could just speak from my own personal experiences. I mean, when we were working on P in 2022, I know we looked at population ratios, we looked at a bunch of other things, and we were talking about the ratio of population that was paying versus population that was using the resources, the number of, the traffic patterns for our local grocery stores, traffic patterns for the number of bodies that come through. Again, it's a statistical estimate, not a statistical fact. That's why I didn't say reference, you know, this statistical model.
Okay, I would appreciate a little more data on how that, how those numbers were achieved, because like I said, I don't track it in my business, so when I report my sales tax, there's not a part on there that this went to the county and this went to the state or whatever, the city. I mean, the city portion is a complete portion, one entry. It doesn't differentiate between county and city residents. So I would appreciate a little more information on where those percentages were acquired and how they were acquired. Okay?
It's an estimate of shopping habits.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a statistical analysis of habits.
Okay. That would be one for you, Solomon. That's something you would be able to answer, I would hope.
Not now, though. I need some time to do research.
Okay, thank you. And my only comment would be is that while you're gonna, while we have used this initiative to pay for a lot for the police department and the road repairs, which is great, it's a little bit disingenuous to say that we would have to cut the police department and road repairs if this doesn't pass, because really, it's a general tax, which means it can be used anywhere. So what it means is that the city would have to make severe cuts. Okay? They wouldn't have to be made to the police department or the roads. There could be other places. Okay? All I'm saying is the phraseology is a little disingenuous, such as the city would lose that money and the cuts would have to be made somewhere. And that would be a very hard decision for you to make those decisions, of course, but it's kind of like the government says, whenever they start talking about cutting programs, the first thing they say, we're gonna cut Social Security, the one that means the most and gets the most attention. And that's disingenuous as a federal government to do that, as well as at the state level when they say the first thing we're gonna cut is the schools or whatever they decide, one to get most attention from the people. So my only comment is that using the argument that we would have to severely cut the police department, I would rather hear you say we would have to make severe cuts within the city to accommodate the loss of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor? Seeing none, any public comment on the phones? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to the council for any final comments. Does anybody else have any other comments?
I have a subtle correction.
Okay.
The State Board of Equalization, they don't call themselves that anymore, haven't for a few years. It's now, they renamed their office. It's now called the State Board of Taxes and Fees or something.
CD TFA.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Little truth in packaging, that name. That's all I had.
Okay, I have a couple of things. You know, again, I want to highlight a couple of things that weren't said here, just from an important perspective. Mr. Wicknick does make a reasonable point, that he's accurate, that we would have to incur severe cuts, but more importantly, the idea of losing the 1% protection and the 2% protection we have from the county is equally incredibly important and not disingenuous. Right now, there are county agencies already planning measures for 2026 for Kern County roads, and we would then be completely subject to those taxes, where we are not subject to them right now because we have protected the 2% base for our local taxes. And it's really important to focus on the key words here, which is City of Ridgecrest Local Services Measure. That means that all of this money is protected by us, and there's a very important line throughout this entire, at the end of this measure, that I believe takes any disingenuousness communication out of the equation, which is quite simply, all funds for City of Ridgecrest, no funds for Sacramento. This is 100% here, and that's what is so important about the two measures between Measure V and Measure P, is that we have self-protected our tax base for our local services, and we are seeing it more relevantly today than we have ever before in the amount of infrastructure work, the amount of development work that we are doing as a community. I hear more often than anything else, what happened over the last decade that we didn't do anything? And I said, we spent more time fighting with each other than we did actually doing things. And the biggest thing that we're able to do now is we put fuel in the tank and we're able to accomplish those goals. So I very strongly support, obviously, the continued support of whatever measure this should become, L, V, P, Q, whatever it ends up being, whatever letter we get pooled in the domino effect. Maybe it's Measure R this time for roads, or since we can't really use P for police again, maybe S for safety, I don't know what it'll be. But the simple fact is that the citizens need to understand and hear that there's two critical elements to this. Number one, your sales tax that you are paying right now out of pocket does not increase one iota from what it is today. And two, it continues to protect every single dollar that is being raised in sales tax that is here for the use of the citizens of the City of Ridgecrest. Those are two important facts that above and beyond everything else must be reiterated and understood. Now, I understand people may say, well, you're just attacking police, you're just attacking this. No, I want to make sure that every resource for this community is protected for our citizens and that the direct investment that we're making out of our wallets every single time we make a purchase within the city is going to the benefit of the citizens of this city. I don't want to see another half a cent or 3/4 cent going off to Kern County where we're not getting that type of consistent support. So with that, I have said all of my piece, and I would ask, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to let you know that we're gonna have to adjust the slide just a little bit on the voting. We're gonna have to do roll call on this one, because I made an error in the voting slide, because we have to do three motions, one to approve the resolution, and then one to waive the reading in full, then to introduce by title only, and I did not make slides that said that.
And I don't have all that on my script.
I know, so I can read it if you'd like, I have it. I know, I just realized that.
How do you expect me to do a job if I don't just have directions in front of me?
I'm taking full blame, sir.
Sorry, that was for everyone out there on Facebook, Glenn, you can have fun with that one. So we'll go ahead and begin by calling for a approval of the resolution.
Approval of the resolution, sure.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the resolution with the amended change to the whereas as requested by Councilman Roger Rotnum? Do I have a motion to end as of March 2025? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Whoa.
It appears that I could not ask for a greater echo chamber than that. Is there, so I have a motion, I believe, by Mr. Gorman, and I have a second by Mr. Heyman, he wants that one, which I appreciate, sir. And that is a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Nope, this one will be a motion to waive the reading in full of the ordinance. This one doesn't require a public hearing.
Right. Just of the ordinance?
Yeah, there's gonna be, part of this is an amendment to the municipal code, which is the ordinance, which we will introduce if the council votes to introduce it today.
Understood, I just want to make sure I'm saying it right.
And then after the election, we will take the next step depending on how the results are.
Do I have a motion for the, to waive the reading of the ordinance?
In full.
In full?
In, yeah.
So moved. I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion, second, roll call?
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
And then?
The next one is a motion to introduce by title only.
And then do I have a motion to introduce by title only the ordinance?
The ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code concerning the temporary reauthorization transaction and use sales tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization.
As stated by a wonderful city attorney. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, roll call?
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries, I had to do that because Kyle was always right there. I just had to get him.
You know what, that was well done, well done, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and appreciate the support of our council and the conversation. Next, we are moving to item number seven. Item number seven is a resolution to accept the base bid submitted by Resource Environmental Inc., allocate Measure P funds for the base bid and up to $32,500 for a 10% contingency construction, or construction contingency, a maximum total of up to $357,500. Award a construction contract to Resource Environmental Inc. for the demolition of the Penny Pool Complex and authorize the city manager, Ron Strand, to execute the contract. Ms. Reed?
I was just gonna sit here for a second and let that linger.
I just wanted to let it linger. I'm gonna say it one more time. Okay, no problem. One more time, to award a construction contract to Resource Environmental Incorporated for the demolition of the Penny Pool Complex. Ms. Reed?
So as you guys know, we've been working diligently on this pool project. The first step is the, I don't know if I have the same reading, but the demolition of the Penny Pool.
You gotta break something to build it.
So we received four bids on this project, two are local and two are out of town. The winning bid that we feel is environmental resources. winning bid that we feel is environmental resources. They were all fairly evenly stacked. And in the words of our dedicated city manager, "Under our estimate this time."
It's nice to see "under" the estimates.
Yeah. So we did a full comprehensive review. We did some reference checks. All the reference checks came back glowing. So they're a good contractor. They've done numerous projects, and they have a good standing when it comes to abatement of asbestos, abatement of lead, and confinement. So with that, we're asking you to award a contract and allow us to get rocking and rolling on the pool. And I'm open for any questions.
Okay. Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Oh.
Oh.
Any council comments, Mr. Gorman?
None. I'm eager to say aye officially and help get this thing cracking.
You'll get to do another groundbreaking ceremony, too.
You have to do a groundbreaking and a ribbon cutting.
Yes.
You get, it's a double. Mr. Hayman?
So in the event of approval, when will we get a start date on the demolition?
So typically, once we get approval from you guys, we will send contracts out. And then, once we have contracts signed, it's usually about a two-week process. We have a pre-con in between that time, and we will get a schedule. So my guess would be early to mid-August.
Okay.
Mr. Roger Rotnum? Mr. Reed, on that context, does the contract come to the city council again?
The contract for the demolition will not.
Will not?
Once we bid the actual construction, the construction contract will come back, because we'll have to authorize the funds. As you saw in my staff report, we didn't budget for this, because we really didn't know what to budget for it. So we're gonna wait till we see the bids and then ask for the funds.
Okay. Do we know what is the timeframe? How many months do they want to complete the job?
So right now, in our bid package, which we felt was very, very safe to make sure we controlled costs, we gave them a maximum of 60 days to complete the contract. I've been around one other demolition project back when I was younger. Demolition usually goes pretty quick, so I don't think they'll need 60 days. We've already worked with Edison. Edison has both services cut, power is off to it. We're working on getting PG&E out to cut the one gas service off that we have left, and it will be full blow and go, literally.
How about the hazardous material, if there is something? How about the abatement of that? Do they take care of that, too?
Yes. So I think one of the defining factors with why this bid came in lower than we expected is this company has all the in-house licenses to be able to do everything in-house. So all their asbestos abatement, they have that license. Lead abatement, they have that license. Demolition, they have that license. So all that stuff will be handled. It'll follow all of state law as far as containing it, double wrapping asbestos, and getting it to an approved facility for disposal. We will require manifests from them that show basically, cradle to grave, where it came from, how it was packaged, who transported it, and where it's gonna rest.
Yeah, they seem to be very experienced in this kind of demolition. So they did work for, I did some research online. So they seem to be a reputed company for demolition and for various cities, like San Bernardino and some other cities, they did jobs. So I don't see any problem with them. Do you foresee any issues?
I do not, sir. I think we did a pretty good job on the spec. I think it'll be pretty crystal clear and, yeah, an easy project to complete.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Blades?
Is there any public comment?
Seeing none. Is there any public comment on the phones? Seeing none. I'll bring you back to council. I'll make my final comment. Once again, emphasizing the words demolition, we can't get there fast enough. To all the citizens in the community, you gotta break some eggs before you can make an omelet? It's time to break some eggs. I'm getting hungry. So I have nothing more to say than this is, this is the first step into a brighter world that we've been waiting for, for some time to get to. So, thank you very much. With that, I will call for a motion for approval of the resolution.
Motion to approve.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Kyle?
I promise.
Do you have a problem, sir? Five ayes, motion carries.
And allow me the moment to be the nerd that I am, in the immortal words of Lieutenant Chilton from Empire Strikes Back, "The first transport is away."
Such.
I just meant that you're starting your process. So, thank you guys for your help and work on that. Next item is item number eight. Discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Mr. Hayman?
Thank you, Mayor. The Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority did meet last Wednesday on July 10. I will go over some of those agenda items. So, starting with item number nine, which was the funding status of the Interconnection Pipeline Project. Capitol Corps gave a review of where we're at with the funding request through WERDA. And so it continues to move forward. One of the things I'd like to make note of is that this funding request through WERDA, it's a difficult process to get through and has lots of time constraints, but we are, we are there. And the thing that I think is important here is that it is a bipartisan support. So both sides are in support, and it's also bicameral, meaning both the Senate and the House. It is on the floors of both the House and Senate. So that's good news for the WERDA. Other than that, we gave recommendations for Capitol Corps to continue to pursue a 2026 funding request for WERDA. Next, we have the agenda item 10, which was approval of the master agreement between the U.S. Department of the Interior, Bureau of Land Management, Ridgecrest Field Office, and the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Let's see. So basically, this was, staff recommendations were to approve the master agreement between the U.S. Department of the Interior, BLM, Ridgecrest Field Office, and authorizing up to an additional $199,976 to reimburse the BLM. And basically, it deals with the CEQA-NIPA documents. There's some added costs that will be incurred, which doesn't surprise me, because when dealing with these various other agencies and CEQA-NIPA, there's, it tends to be additional costs that come down the road, which was anticipated. But the board approved the increased amount. So, nothing else to be said about that. Next, we have agenda item number 11, which was the master confidentiality agreement with the Bureau of Land Management for the Interconnection Pipeline Project, in accordance with the National Historic Preservation Act and the Archaeological Resources Act. This was just an informational item, and no action was required by the board. Next, we have item number 12, which was the 3.3 million consolidation grant for Shallow Well Consolidation Project. This one's a little more interesting, and action is being done. So basically, the, there was a receipt of money of 3.3 million for consolidation grants for Shallow Well. So the board was discussing where that money would be best spent. It was determined that there was three or four areas that are of concern, but when you break it down and prioritize what areas needed work the quickest, and the amount of work that we can accomplish with the money, the Radamacher Project was put on the fast track. For those that didn't get to see the meeting, the Radamacher Way Street, which is if you're heading south on China Lake Boulevard, you go past the old Walmart and the new Albertson's Tractor Supply. Just past that, between Norma and Downs, where they intersect off to the left, would be Radamacher Way. The water out there is, again, you could say contaminated, or it's not so much contaminated as it is, this full of TDSs and, it's undrinkable, it is unbatheable. One of the homeowners who I spoke with previously, but he came in, I guess you could say he gave testimony or explained to the board what some of his issues were with the water, and it was pretty impactive. They can't bathe in it, he can't bathe his kids in it, they can't drink it. They've tried a couple solutions to try to filter the water. So full of TDSs, it's not filterable. There was a project that had been started to get in there and run a pipeline, I believe, through the Water District. And then, due to various issues that had arose, that project didn't follow through. And so they, those, you know, that's this family, and, you know, you could, suffice to say that the rest of the homes and individuals live out there are under the same boat. So the board approved moving forward with the Radamacher fix. I think the Water District is in, working in unison with the GA to get that problem fixed out there. So that's good news to see money being spent directly on, you know, fixing somebody's negative position that they're in. So I was really glad to see that occur. Enough there. And then, finally, we have the item number 13, which was the approval of change in budget in Import Pipeline Project to cover revegetation and geotechnical site and enhanced, or enhanced technical monitoring for the biological, archaeological, and tribal monitors during the geotechnical testing phase of design work. So there was a change in budget, and that was an amount of $277,000, and that was approved by the board. And so that's it on the primary agenda items. There was a, yeah, let's see. Maybe I set it over here. And last but not least, we had the item number 14, which was the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Model Update. So basically, DWR requires the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, such as the Indian Wells Valley GA, to evaluate their GSPs every five years and provide a written assessment to DWR. The Indian Wells Valley periodic evaluation is submitted to DWR no later than January 31st of 2025. So the update on the modeling included some changes in data, some new data. I'll go over just some of the brief highlights of it. Model domain configuration, there was a slight change in the area of study with the domain, where they're actually, you know, taking data from the primary area and consolidating that. There was inclusion of a thick-layer clay unit. One of interest to everybody was through, went through the earthquakes, there was an inclusion of additional faults, which may affect or could possibly affect, you know, some of the movement of water in the underground landscape. Updated evapilatranspiration zones in the China Lake Basin. Evapilatranspiration is when you have heat and dryness and other factors that are absorbing moisture out of the air and out of the ground. And so certain plant life lives within that balance of surface air and moisture and groundwater sources that they rely on from underground. So they're keeping track of the vegetative and plant life of the basin. Updated recharge distribution. There were some mild changes on the northern part of the basin. The number still totaled out at 7650, but they, it looks like more water may be associated to the, you know, when you divide that, this basin into different segments, where that water is, you know, deemed to be coming from has shifted a little bit, but not so much in the way of increasing any water supply. Model calibration, this was an interesting note. The model error was reduced by 12 feet of 45%. So as they add more data and run the modeling scenarios, it seems to become more accurate and with those changes and additional data. Modeling scenarios, they ran two modeling scenarios. One was based on current usage of the water. As you would concur that, you know, there's not much change in the decrease of our basin in loss of water. But the second model, based on implementing GSP projects, overall, the water shows a gradual decline in usage, so, which are the goals that the GSP is anticipating, looking to be successful at. So, and with that, that's all I have. So I'm open to any questions that anyone might have.
Not this time. Not this time. Mr. Gorman?
A silly little question. I saw in print somewhere, small print, in a newspaper, I think, recently, last Wednesday, California State Water Resources Control Board approved a policy that will require water suppliers to reduce the amount of water they provide over the next 15 years. My question is, how is this gonna be integrated and reconciled with the GA's groundwater sustainability plan? It is my hope that when you know, you share it with us. It's possible that this thing that I read may only apply to standing groundwater, not water that we pump out of the aquifer. I wasn't able to find out for sure. And right now, I feel like I'm the only one in the known universe that actually read this little article. But it's there. It was in one of our newspapers. Have you heard of it?
I have not, but do you recall if it was sourced from the DWR, or was it?
There's a lesson for everybody. Make sure you know the source of something. No, I can't.
Okay. Well, that's an interesting question. And if you'll forward it to me, I'd be happy to
I sure will.
Bring that to the attention of the board.
Thanks.
I was, I was trying to think, is that possibly the effort that they've been working towards to reduce the household usage, that the Water District has been faced with the 55-gallon daily? I don't, I don't, I don't know the source, Mr. Gorman. I don't know if that would be connected to that possibly.
That was a different state. I remember that initiative, and I think it's still coming down. It's something
I do.
There's still back and forth.
Yeah. I mean, that's another one of the uglies that we know is hiding out there is an effort by the state to, walk into another lovely state regulation.
Forty-two gallons by 2030.
Yeah, I believe it. But is it, I thought it was 55 gallons per?
We're at 55 now. It's gonna go down to 42 by 2030.
By 42. So, and that's, that's per
Per person, per household.
Per household. And, I mean, just, that's a pretty dramatic impact, especially for communities like ours that are swamp cooler facilitated. It could have a substantial impact on what the penalties are that the Water District would be required to assess to meet the regulatory expectations.
Or landscaping.
Or landscaping. Again, it
We'll definitely be
Monitoring that, I know. Yeah. I mean, there's not a formal implementation, but it's like, I mean, for everyone out there, just like SB 1383, this is a, I mean, we didn't pass the law. They then take it and revise the law, and then they shove it down our proverbial throats. So it's one of those things that's coming. I don't know how soon it's getting here, but it's definitely, they want to further restrict the water usage by household. I don't know if it was that, but I don't think it is. You did say something in there that I just want to highlight, because one of the arguments that we hear, you know, from the citizen side is, you know, there's been that long, you know, 20-year or 30-year. I mean, I haven't even been here that long, and even I know the debate has been from day one, you know. There's more water underground than we think there is, you know. And that's the old drumbeat that people want to bang on, is, you know, you don't have good science, you know, so on and so forth. But I am accurate that you said that the actual likelihood of, the probability factors for the model improved relative to the new data that's been provided, correct?
Correct.
That's important to note, that, you know, it's really kind of hard to argue with a statistical model that only improves based on more data in terms of its error, its margin of error. So like anything else, if you surveyed 50,000 people and you had a margin of error of 10%, and then you surveyed 500,000 people and your margin of error went to 5%, you know, and once again, the data is more validated than it was before, which only puts further strength on our existing scientific data that we're using through the GA. So I think that's a really relevant point that needs to be just reiterated. So thank you for sharing that. Any other? Any other councilman? Okay. Any public, yeah, come right now. Any public comment?
On the Radamacher problem? Were they on wells, and how many people were affected by that?
They are on wells. I don't know the exact number of homes on that road.
Okay. I think there's about 14 homes.
That number, yeah, don't quote that number.
Okay. I was just curious what the?
It was mid-10s.
That's what I had in my head, too, from the meeting.
Okay. And is the solution, the Water District, to run lines out there?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is the solution to have the Water District run lines out there?
Right. And bring them on to?
Water District.
Water District, providing the water.
All right. And as far as the monthly allotment, 55 gallons now or something? I got Mr. Wicknick, Mrs. Wicknick, and Bonnie Wicknick. I hope I get one for all. Doesn't matter that Bonnie's my dog, but that's okay.
Yeah. I think on the Radamacher, it's what? 12 houses?
12.
Thanks. Mr. Reed is telling the story. And I think one of the real important things about the Radamacher project that we found out is, the project itself had been drawn out by the Water District several years ago, but there was not a financing means on which to be able to accomplish it. And luckily, there is already at least some technical and engineering work that had been done that allows this project to move forward much more swiftly, to bring relief to those neighborhoods. So it was an identified issue years ago that Radamacher had a shallow well issue. This just allows us to expedite getting relief to those. I mean, it's for you to say, but I think this grant.
And with that, I think that just confirms why I made this statement at the meeting, too, but it should have been handled a while back. Glad to see it getting handled now.
Exactly.
And anyway, so it's a good thing.
Less talking, more doing. Okay. Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phones? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council, and there's no action to be taken. We'll move on to item number nine. Item number nine is a public hearing and a resolution. Resolution and public hearing of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest authorizing the use of federal funding under Federal Transit Administration, Section 5311, USC Section 49, USC Section 5311, and/or 5339, 49 USC Section 5339, with California Department of Transportation. We will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, and Mr. Reed will get your staff report.
Good evening, council. So as you guys know, I believe it was back in February, I forgot to look the date up, you guys approved us to apply for and to enter an agreement for the congestion mitigation air quality grant, which we applied to get two fully electric buses for Caltrans. This is the next step of that. And to free up more funds for other available projects for the current area, this is a very specialized project, and it falls directly under a transit operation fund. So they asked to transfer it, and in order for us to be eligible for that, to get the funds from 5311, we have to have a public hearing. So this is basically housekeeping. This is us authorizing the transfer of the money, so that way it can be funded from a different pot of grant funds. It's the same cost to the city. It's a 13% match, basically, and it's for about $457,000, so we can get two more fully electric buses and utilize our chargers that are all active as of today from our last CMAC project. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, sir. And just want to reiterate one thing from the point here, is that this is a total project, estimate of $515,900, with a local match of $59,000. We're getting great value here in terms of using the, we're still all paying the bill, but we're getting great value in terms of using the capital grants that are being provided for this project. Is there any other council comments? Is there, I will go ahead and take, is there any public comment? Once again, I'll give a moment. Any for the phones? Seeing no public comment, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would call for, I'll bring it back to council and call for a motion for approval of the resolution authorizing the use of federal funding under the FTA with California Department of Transportation for the acquisition of the two buses.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, second. I have a motion, second.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much, sir. Next is our committee reports. Feels like we've not been here for a bit, so there's a whole lot of canceled on here. I believe the only group that I know did meet was, we'll go by date order. We'll let RACVB go first, because that's from June. Did they meet at the end of June? Because I don't seem to remember that.
I do that.
Okay, so, and I don't think we have staff here, so we're going to pass on the RACVB report, and then Quality of Life met on July 2nd. Again, the focus was on the numerous projects that we have going and the soon-to-be occurring demolition of the Pitty Pool Site. We also focused in on the resurfacing of the tennis courts, which should be starting in the next two, two weeks? Monday? Monday, the resurfacing of the tennis courts will begin on Monday, and the work that is continuing to go at Leroy Jackson Sports Complex for the walking path, the lighting, the grass. I want to just highlight something that I think is really the important message here is, when we have our Quality of Life meetings, we get a chance to reiterate and review all the things that are going on in our community. And then occasionally, we get communication from our citizens that, you know, they're, you know, why is so much construction going on? And, you know, I can't use the parks because there's so much construction, and I'd just like to reiterate for everyone, these are problems we like to have. The fact that we are able to do so many projects, and we've had these projects in the works, we've got a lot of construction going around town to improve the quality of life for our citizens, and we're looking forward to seeing all of those projects come together. As we closed Carmageddon from a quality of life perspective, I just want to make sure the citizens understand that all the other work that's going on is only to improve and make this community even better and stronger in the future, and we just thank you for your patience and understanding that we can't do everything, but we are doing everything that we can do. And that's, that's a great problem to have. We also discussed, obviously, their upcoming schedules. We are, they're already in the planning stages for many of our wonderful fall events, including trunk or treat and the tree lighting, which both are going to be incredible this year. It's amazing what happens when you get enthusiasm and then opportunity, and they come together. You get staff that is highly engaged and wants to have a lot of fun and make a great experience for our citizens, and I'm really looking forward to seeing those. Beyond that, the rest was general discussion on the, the different parks projects and where each of them are in terms of progress. Was there anything else you'd like to share, Mr. Gorman? No. Great answer.
Mr. Gorman had a question on the lights, remember?
On the?
Synchronizing the lights?
I did. On synchronizing the tennis courts lights, or?
For the traffic lights.
Oh, traffic lights. I think that, but I think we referred that to Public Works and to City Org at that time, because it would, Public Works are infrastructure, because it was a question about the, I mean, everyone knows that we put new traffic light systems in, first iteration, you know, it's like anything else, it's a learning computer, we got to get it right, and we've been working through those processes. I think that you've been very interested in the night skies effect.
I have, indeed. When we finally get together with the East Kern Air Pollution Control District, I'll ask them, is light pollution come under your auspices? And watch them look at each other and think, does it? And I'll help them along that path, starting when I attend my first meeting.
Any other committees, boards, or commissions? Anybody? I'll just say again, again, for the citizens that may be confused, why the second meeting of the month, on occasion, I may not be here, it's because I am attending LAFCO at the same time. LAFCO, for anybody who, again, isn't aware, is the Local Area Formation Committee, and that is the group that works on creating public sector groups, and things like the East Kern Healthcare District that's being worked on, as well as many other different groups. This is also where I get a lot of insight into what the Kern County of Governments and things, those things are looking at, and where I've heard about sales tax measures and things of that nature that they're working on. So I am not here for those means, but there's nothing actively to report from LAFCO, other than I can tell you that, once again, the value of the city's position on the sales tax in the protected 2% is something that has caused a turning of heads of a few other city officials for other Kern County government agencies that went, huh, that's an interesting strategy, and wow, that seems really, so, like I said, if you can get a politician go, huh, that's usually a good sign. And so we were very much at the forefront. The other one that they usually ask us about being at the forefront is our choice to go to biweekly trash service, and how that has impacted our ability to effectively implement SB 1383, especially in light of the county's failure to properly get it implemented at this stage. So that would be from LAFCO report. And the other, I don't hear any others. City manager report.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, did you report that they had installed the bathroom and snack bar?
I did not, because, because as of our meeting, it had not been installed.
It has.
Yay!
In fact, on social media, we do have a video of it being put in place. So we have a lot of work going on in town. What's that? Yeah, and a lot more to come. We are going to be, when we do have that schedule for the pool demolition, staff plans to do a groundbreaking on that, so council will be invited to that. That will be something special. We'll try to invite Sergeant Penny's family to the groundbreaking, because I think this is a, this is a huge monument mark within our community, getting that pool back. So with that, that's all I have.
I will tell you that I jokingly almost brought one of the hard hats that I got off base during one of the groundbreakings. I almost brought it from my office for this night's meeting, just for the comical aspects, but I promise you, I'm looking forward to using it very soon. Future agenda items? Any have, any future agenda items requested? I do know your one item was requested, and Mr. Reed does have that. We'll do mayor and council comments, and I will let Mr. Gorman be the first.
I suppose, when the long-awaited demolition first starts, that it'll be appended with a appropriate ceremonial something or other. I see Travis nodding his head every, if anybody listening has some cute ideas that may have, that he may want to consider also, you're invited to let him know. That's it.
Mr. Raymond?
I have none.
Mr. Rajatnam?
Thank you.
Mr. Blades? Well, I'm going to do two real quickly. I first want to take a moment and recognize two things that are, that are leaving our community. One that's left, and one that will be leaving tomorrow. And I think they're very important markers in what we've accomplished over the last four years between the City of Ridgecrest and the Department of the Navy. The first one that has left is the retirement of Captain JV Vaughn. Anybody who worked with Captain Vaughn knows that he did an incredible amount of work in bridging and bringing our relationships between city and Navy closer than they've been in years. Not only did he do it by being a good man, but also by being a transparent man and being somebody who spoke honestly about his goals and aspirations to see for the community, but went in line for the needs of the base. And I truly appreciate JV, and we wish him the very best, and we were honored to thank him for his service, and I wish him the very best as he begins his civilian life. And I certainly hope, and I think this is probably about the 12th or 15th time I've said this to him, but I haven't said it out loud on the, from the dais, I certainly hope that he will be a member of our community for many years to come. The second is tomorrow morning is the de-establishment ceremony of the OICC. And for those of you who are not familiar with the OICC, that is the Officer in Charge of Construction, and that is the department that was put up in order to rebuild our wonderful China Lake facilities. That group has had a greater impact on the future of this community, this base, and the overall well-being of the citizens of Ridgecrest than any citizen is given a fair credit. They were the people that were in charge of getting the bids, the organization, the jobs done, everything about rebuilding our base following the events of July 4th and July 5th, which we just surpassed a five-year anniversary. To imagine that we are not only talking about the establishment, but now the dis-establishment of more than $4 billion worth of construction that's occurred over the last five years in rebuilding our base and making it, as Mr. Gorman shared from his experience, and I got to be with that experience today as well, to see what has been improved on the facility. It is amazing when we hear the stories of what they have already accomplished in the 80 years that it has served the military. I can only imagine what they are going to accomplish in the future with the resources, efficiency, and technology that they now have in place. We should be the first at the top of every graduate chemistry engineering department for people that are looking for an opportunity to work in the most modern labs and the greatest facilities, and in, in protecting what is so important about America and protecting our warfighters. It is just so inspiring to see the number of people that were there this morning, celebrating the work that was there. And one of the unique things was the Pruitt family, I believe it was Pruitt, right? Ron Pruitt? Was that gentleman?
Yes.
And his dad. Four generations of, of, of a family that have worked in that facility or that building over time. And just to see the amount of care and love and passion that they shared for everything that's been accomplished from that facility, and what the next generation is going to have. And I literally finished that conversation, I turned and I was talking to the son of one of our measure, the commissioners, our committee members, and Holly was telling us about her son that was working there as an intern, and, and the enthusiasm of what the opportunities that he gets to now see and be exposed to in this incredible facility. Then we got to walk over to the chemistry lab and see even more incredible, and then the environmental lab and see even more incredible. And it was just two months ago that we got to walk through Mike Lab and see more incredible. And there's going to be a ribbon cutting for the South Runway at some point, if God ever allows it to happen, which is just an FAA deed, but there's so much that is happening on that base that I really encourage you, if you've ever worked with somebody at OICC or if you're involved in it, please tell them thank you. Tell them we really truly appreciate the incredible work that's done. Commander Scott is in town, Lori Scott is here, and then Ben, Captain Wainwright is leaving our community after this. But between those two men, there's been such an incredible amount of work through OICC that has cemented the future of our community. And that's a great use of the word cement, because that's what they did. They not only just put in the work, but they have also set the foundation for what we can do in the future. So it is with my, with my final comments that I simply say thank you to Captain Vaughn for his service to our country and to this community, and to the entire team of OICC for their incredible work in putting, laying down the foundation for what the future of this community will be. With that, I wish you all a wonderful evening, and we'll see you again the first Wednesday of August. Take care.